Let's go, oh, no deb tonight Detroit?
What's that?
No deb tonight, or?
Oh, shoot, yeah.
I think you said that. What were the minutes? I don't know, we didn't say anything.
Hold on one second. Okay, if you're gonna do it, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. We're all set.
Worst case, you can get off the video.
Yeah, Matt, you could go ahead. Or are you?
It's up, it's up to you guys when you, when you're.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm all set, go ahead.
There it is.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, but you're just focusing on his seat there, not on us.
Sorry.
That's okay.
He likes to be in the limelight.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December twenty-seventh and final meeting of two thousand seventeen with the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. Uh, it is five thirty-two, and the board's just coming out of a paperwork review session, and I'd like to open the meeting with a call to order and a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to wish everyone happy holidays, and hopefully your holidays were productive and joyous. And we will be wishing you a happy new year as we go forward. The first item, we'd like to review and approve of items of consent. We have the minutes of the December eleventh meeting, uh, county's payable manifest of December nineteenth of forty-nine thousand, two ninety-seven fifteen, and December twenty-sixth of two hundred twenty-seven thousand, two fifty-eight eighty-four. We have a payroll manifest, December sixteenth of thirty-six thousand, three eleven fifty-eight, and December twenty-eighth of forty-eight thousand, six ninety-three eighty-five. We have a tax collector and town clerk's reconciliation for November, and we have fourteen veterans' tax credits. Is there any of those items that members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all accept a motion to approve. Mr. Bork, seconded by Mr. Brunel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Uh, any other items members would like to have placed on the agenda? Okay, um, public input will occur no earlier than five forty-five, and we will start out by the first order of business, uh, having a public hearing on the dog license fees. Mr. Brunel.
Okay, so the town clerk has requested that the Board of Selectmen consider increasing the dog registration fees one dollar for two thousand eighteen. Um, her research has shown that all the communities around, uh, Litchfield, pretty much in southern New Hampshire, have all opted to go with the extra dollar fee. And what's driving the cost primarily is the increased cost in, um, purchasing the, the, um, the, the registration tags and some of the paperwork that goes along with processing that. So, it does require a public hearing, requires public input, um, before the Board of Selectmen consider, uh, changing the fee to one dollar. So, currently right now, the fees are six dollars and fifty cents for dogs that have been altered or neutered. And if your dogs are not neutered, then the fee is nine dollars. So, both of those would go up one dollar, effective January one, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, um, any input from members? Because we have no one from the public that, uh, is here, I believe, to speak on that. Any member input?
My personal opinion is that.
Okay. Mr. Perry, good evening, welcome.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Anyone else have any input on the dog license fee increase?
Mr. Perry, we, um, just having a public hearing on increasing the dog license fees by a dollar.
Okay.
Okay. And the town clerk provided backup information in increasing cost of processing.
For a dollar, I won't question it.
Yep. So, um, I will close public input as there are no members of the public, and, um, if no other members of the board have any, um, comment, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, um, pursuant to RSA four sixty-six colon thirty-nine, I move to increase the male female dog registration license fees from nine dollars to ten dollars, and altered dogs from six fifty to seven fifty, effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Moved by Mr. Brunel. Seconded by Mr. Schaefer, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Uh, item two, Avatar Clerk Motor Vehicle Software, Mr. Brown.
Software. Open it. Okay, the town clerk and our IT director, John Brunel, have, uh, met with a software company, Avatar. Avatar is a company that specializes in municipal software. They currently provide, um, our tax collectors', um, software and the assessing package. So, Terry was at the annual conference this year, had, um, met with the Avatar folks, and introduced, uh, their product to her, and she really, um, found it very interesting and thought it'd be very, um, helpful, uh, to improve the efficiency in the department. So she asked them to come down and do a demo, um, John participated in that demo along with her staff, and the feedback was overwhelmingly, um, highly supportive of changing the system over. The system's going to be, obviously, a newer platform. Um, it's, it's gonna be a web-based system where everything would be stored off-site, so getting updates, and just overall maintenance of the systems a lot easier, um, for both our IT director and the users here. It also will offer, um, better service for the, um, customers where they'll be able to do, um, online, um, registration and get receipts and stuff, um, right, you know, from their home. It's, it's just, you know, the system we've had, I'm not sure how old it is, John, but I know it's, I've heard both from Terry and John that, you know, every year we continue to, um, have to troubleshoot the system, it doesn't always wo- work the way we want. And quite frankly, it sounds like, um, the quality of service has deteriorated over the last few years. So, everyone's really, uh, pleased with this package, we like the idea that it's, um, that we already have Avatar here at, at the town office, and as I said, the tax collector and the, um, assessing department. Uh, they're local, um, over in Auburn, New Hampshire. And whereas the other group, I think, is up in Franconia, New Hampshire. We're able, between the IT budget and the town clerk budget, we're able to do this within our operating budget here in two thousand seventeen. And so, the timing of this is critical, uh, to actually get this moving and get it all loaded so that effective January one, we'll have a system, hopefully up and running. But if not, then it'll be a February first launch date.
Yeah, I think the, um, just one, a small correction. So, it's not a cloud-based per se, it's the, the online services are all on, that's all cloud-based, the backend is a more modern system than we have today. Workflow is much smoother. There's a lot of thought in how they process customers and what customers can go through to be able to hold kind of things like in a cart model, like you go to an online store, you cart it, so a lot of the stuff is a little, a lot more streamlined, much more, um, uh, later generation user front-end controls. And so a lot of the problems we run with this system is actually improved and or removed. Plus, as, uh, Troy had indicated, there's been some support issues over the last couple of years, availability, just follow-through, that kind of stuff. And as far as the budget goes, um, as Troy indicated, um, her yearly maintenance fees for the current software, and plus the savings we have from, from the printer project from this past year, uh, will allow us to actually put this new system in place. The goal is to start the conversion in January first, after the holiday, and go live the la- the last week of the month. Training would be already done and all that stuff, and then at that point, we would terminate our relationship with the other vendor. And like I said, budgetary-wise, we're good with it, it's all gonna work all fine, and we've, like, we've met with the vendor, and we've had other conversations, and we think like, we believe we can get it all done within the January timeframe. They believe it takes two weeks to do the data conversion.
When does the licensing, uh, from the old one, when does, when does that typically do?
So it's year to year, I mean, it's, it's January first or whatever, so I suspect when we, uh, let them know, um, they will charge us for the month.
We'll cover that too.
We're gonna assume that.
Yeah.
But we'll deal with that when that time comes. You know, the, the.
It'll still be two thousand dollars cheaper, right, on the new one, the licensing fee than the old one, right? Eventually.
Yeah, yeah, so what happens, yeah, exactly, year-over-year cost is gonna be cheaper, but the startup cost is obviously a little bit more expensive, because you gotta buy it, it's, uh, you know, and then we have to do the transver- the conversion. But, uh, after next year, that cost will drop down about two thousand dollars.
Any other questions of John or Troy on this? I'll entertain a motion. To approve. Accepting purchasing the new.
I'll say, I'll make a motion to, um, purchase the new clerk software from Avatar Clerk M A P, M A A P system.
Moved by Mr. Schaefer. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bork, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, thank you. Unanticipated funds. Mr. Brown, welcome to Litchfield sign. You all saw that, um, I'll just preface, you know, there was a picture in the paper that, uh, we, we, the highway department and Troy, I guess, they were able to get out and get the sign set up, the sign, it's a beautiful sign. And, uh, I went down, picked Pat up, and brought her down to see it when they unveiled it, and she was, she was thrilled, she was real happy with it.
What she wanted, uh, she'd been calling me for the last six weeks, you know, because she wanted this installed before Christmas, and, um, you know, we had some issues with the sign company, we had some issues with, uh, New Hampshire DOT, um, and then we had Turnpike Authority had to get involved, and, um, and then, of course, we were up against some weather, but we were able to do it. And, um, I do wanna thank the highway department, Greenscape.
Greenworks.
Greenworks.
That's right, I figured out.
Landscaping. Not Selectmen Schaefer, but Greenworks, used their, um, trailer and their auger, uh, which made it possible to, to be able to actually, um, dig in the soil, uh, such late in the season. So, um, it all went well, you know, you've seen all the activity, I think everyone loves the sign, and just wanted everyone to be aware. Pat made this donation, she specifically wanted that location, um, and it's her hope that by installing that sign, that others will step up, towns step up, um, that, that anyhow, this will be a seed, you know, that will help.
Get one in the north.
Get other signs up throughout town.
And maybe smaller ones in the. Great, so we just need a motion to accept the three thousand, is that correct? Oh, it's written right here. Is there a motion?
Let me do this one, because the other one wasn't pre-written. This one's.
Mr. Schaefer.
I move to accept the monetary gift in the amount of three thousand dollars from Pat Jewett for the purchase of a new Welcome to Litchfield sign, and ask that the town administrator send a thank you letter to Mrs. Jewett on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Moved by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Brunel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Mileage rate?
Each year, the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the personnel policy, reviews the mileage rate, is set by the IRS. This year, we were notified that the, uh, mileage rate has increased one cent, and it'll bring it to fifty-four and a half cents per mile for the use of, uh, personal vehicle for travel.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the standard mileage rate as established by the IRS at fifty-four point five cents per, uh, effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Moved by Mr. Brunel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer, discussion?
When gas was four dollars a gallon, this was like fifty-eight cents. This is bull.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries four, one, zero.
Cause it didn't matter anyway.
Okay, special detail fund balance, Mr. Brown.
Alright, hopefully, as, as the board's aware, uh, we have our, um, police department's special detail fund. And we had, um, as you know, we, we, we pay for, um, all different types of expenses related to special detail out of the fund. We have some agreements with our union on, um, the use of the fund. And so, once a year with our new side-buy agreement, it's this time of the year where, uh, we're able to capture some additional funds, uh, to use to help offset, um, the cost of running the program. So, as of right now, we have a balance of thirty-eight thousand dollars approximately in the special detail fund. Our agreement with the union requires reserve two thousand dollars per, um, officer, which would be used towards the employer's matching requirement of their four fifty-seven fund. So we're putting that aside, it leaves a balance of fourteen thousand, uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. What I'd like to recommend to the Board of Selectmen is that we use those funds, uh, we transfer them from the special detail fund, and to credit the police department, um, line where we purchased police cruisers this year. The police cruiser, uh, purchase did exceed the budget, um, amount, because of some overruns with, um, computer and camera equipment. And as you know, we, we didn't trade in some of the cruisers, I've recycled them down, um, so, um, we've kept some of the cruisers on, onboard because of the amount of special detail that we're doing. We also had the, uh, water project where at some times we had multiple cruisers out, um, throughout the summer doing special detail. Where in a normal year, we'd only have our special detail cruisers, so I, I think this is an appropriate use of, of these funds.
But now how many, why were we adding to the cruiser for detail? Because we won't need that anymore.
We, we had, well, this is gonna offset the cost.
Of this year's purchase.
Incur- this year, over and above, uh, the budget. We, we had overruns in the purchase of the two cruisers, specifically, uh, it was the computer and, um, camera. Which is a, which is new technology that they're moving to, um, for, you know, scanning people's licenses and printing out speeding tickets right there in the cruiser.
Okay.
And there was some grant funds available in that too, so.
Now Troy, will the auditors allow us to credit that, or does this have to go just as a revenue?
No, they'll allow us to credit this.
Are you sure?
They will. We've done, in the past, we've done it.
The only reason I say that is the only time that I thought they allowed that is if you had an unanticipated expense, and this was not that, so you just may wanna check, you may wanna. In, in other words, if you had emergency overtime that you didn't know, what I remember is that the only time that they allowed you to credit the budget, otherwise you have to put it in revenue and go, go over on your budget.
Well, you can, the special detail fund, you can, um, you could purchase, um, equipment from this fund. You know, we could, we could purchase, uh, you can purchase cruisers, you can purchase gas, and so.
I understand that, but when you say credit the cruiser purchase account, I don't think you can do that.
Well, it'd be transferring, because.
Transfer the expenses over to it, won't you?
And throughout the year, I mean, with the agreements that we have with the union, I, I can't reach into the fund and say, grab ten thousand dollars and put it towards, uh, the purchase of cruisers, so.
I, I understand, my, I would just only double-check that you could credit the account versus just putting it as a revenue, moving it over, I agree with moving it over. But, um, I'm just thinking that you can only move it over as a revenue because it's not covering an unanticipated expense, just, okay?
Well, the other thing is, you can backdate the expenses and run it through the pro- front, the detail fund, which is what we originally were gonna do.
You could.
Yeah.
I guess we could do another accounting, we could do.
As long as you do it the way the auditor's suggesting.
We could do a just, an adjusting, adjusting entry, and you're right, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to transfer?
I, I move to authorize the transfer of fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents from the police de- from the police department's special detail fund to the police department cruiser purchase account, zero-one dash four-two-one-zero dot ten dash seven sixty.
Second.
And I have one question.
Moved by Mr. Brunel, seconded by Mr. Perry.
Just a clarification of the question. So you're, you're taking two thou- out of the fund today, you're taking, you're basically holding two thousand dollars per officer in savings for, for two thousand eighteen.
So that, that covers a hundred percent of our liability for two thousand eighteen.
Perfect, okay, that's what makes, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, otherwise, we couldn't do that, John, according to your.
It's twelve, that's, that's twelve officers, the dispatchers are covered in their operating budget, and then our chief and captain is covered.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. LCTV camera operators, minimum work hours?
Okay, so I, I've been working with, uh, Richard Penthony, um, regarding, um, a, a minimum, uh, pay requirement for our, our camera operators. What we've had over the past year, um, I've noticed that the, the operators have had a couple of issues that have come up, and they've expressed frustration to both myself and, and to Richard. We didn't really know how to address it, but, um, we want to make sure that we've done something before we start two thousand eighteen. We think it's only fair that, um, the cable operators, when they come out, uh, in the evening, on weekends, to any type of, uh, school or town meeting event, um, or a public informational meeting that's sponsored by either one of the, the groups, that they get paid a minimum of two hours, now their, their hourly rate's twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. This would cover, um, so this is a minimum payment, basically, of twenty-five dollars for their time and effort to come out, set up the camera equipment, attend the meeting, and break stuff down and go home. There are times when they have shown up, and for whatever reason, people forget to change the calendar, forget to notify the staff, there's no meeting. Or they show up and there's no quorum, and so, obviously, they, they, you know, they might meet and discuss a little bit, but the, the meetings cut really short. And there are meetings that just don't last an hour. So I think the two-hour minimum would be, uh, a step in the right direction to at least make it worth their time and effort to come out, um, you know, and, and do what they do as a service to the town.
Personally, I think for twelve fifty an hour, thank you. That's the least we could. Holy moly. Comments from the board?
If we're gonna start paying a minimums, I'm not gonna feel guilty about telling them to go outside because we have to do it non-public and making them wait.
Right, you wouldn't have to.
Just saying.
Right. Is there a motion?
I move that LCTV camera operators shall be compensated a minimum of two hours for recording and broadcasting live town, school, and other public meetings.
Moved by Mr. Schaefer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Moving right along.
Does that mean he gets twenty-five bucks then?
No, 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 next year.
Two thumbs up. Oh, yeah, that's right, next year.
Bicycle and pedestrian, pedestrian lane. Yes, Kirk, Troy and I attended a meeting. Troy?
Okay. Yeah, this is a follow-up from the, we had this discussion with the board, um, probably earlier in, uh, late November, early December. And as you recall, we had a citizen that had contacted the state, and because there's an opportunity next year where they're gonna be paving the Charles Bancroft Highway, and it'll be striped, um, there's just really this opportunity once in, cause I think they resurface the road like every ten to fifteen years. Next year would be the only opportunity, if we were going to make accommodations for bike pedestrian lanes, uh, this would be the year, two thousand eighteen. The board asked that, uh, we put together a committee, or not a committee, but meet with folks from New Hampshire, um, Department of Transportation, National Regional Planning Commission, and our public safety departments, fire, police, and highway, along with Selectmen Lemire and Selectmen Schaefer, myself, and we had one business owner, a resident, attend the meeting. Very informative meeting, uh, I think it was worthwhile, because there's a lot of movement, um, not only in New Hampshire, but throughout the country, trying to make accommodations for this type of, uh, um, travel. At the end of the day, um, it was the general consensus of everyone present that, um, Charles Bancroft Highway probably is not the right, um, road to experiment with. And the thing that really, um, you know, kinda swayed me on this matter too, is the person from the state was saying that the towns and cities that have really embraced this are the ones that, um, sort of have a whole community built around, um, safe pedestrian travel, and it's part of their economy. You know, if you go up north and people are going up there hiking, um, you know, the mountains, these little towns that have hiking trails and stuff, they, they actually, it's part of their whole business plan. So, um, and the other part was, the Charles Bancroft Highway really doesn't connect to anything, so we're not really connecting to any safe, you know, trails and passageways, so, um, I don't believe it requires, um, any action from you folks unless you want to, uh, take action on it, but it, it really, um, didn't seem to make sense, so we, we knew how one of the selectmen were gonna vote on this matter, but we wasn't really sure how the other four felt.
God, I hate taking a car on that road, and I'm not in a bike.
Yeah, I was just surprised it took a meeting to decide that. Anybody who drives it knows what you know.
Oh, my god.
I don't think anybody there, whether it be the private resident or any of the safety group, wanted it. I mean, it's just, it, it's just a, it's a very narrow road for something.
At least it got it out, it got, you know, we were able to talk about, we got the information we're looking for from planning people, at least to talk about. Was the resident that was encouraging this, was he there?
He was not, no.
Nope. Did anybody not notify the, the person of the decision?
No, because it was, it was only one resident that made that, that request.
And I, I understand why he would, and, I mean, other than taking land to widen the road, there's no option, I, I mean, anybody who drives it every day knows there's no option.
No safe option.
They had a, uh, they had a pretty detailed, you know, overview of three A, and it was given widths, lane widths, all the way down. And it's, it's a narrower road than you think in a lot of cases, it's, it's pretty narrow.
I hate driving in the car, no matter who I am.
Imagine having to go around a bicycle, I mean, not that, that's bad.
Yeah, it's, it's a pain. And I, yeah, as I said, I think we, we talked about it, Albuquerque's there for a reason, and it does do the same, gets to the same end of town, and it's much safer, but.
Okay, budget review?
Well, it's a lot easier to be sitting here right now trying to forecast, um, our budget, and I think.
You've got two days left.
A lot easier.
It is what it is.
And it's turned out to be, um, ending up a lot better than we had projected three, four months ago, even with the, the recent storm events that we just had. So, with that in mind, just understand that, that, you know, we won't know the actual numbers for probably at least another forty-five days. It, it takes time, um, to get all of the bills in, your utility bills, your heating bills, um, there's other ones that trickle in, so, uh, we still have one more payroll. I'm not sure about what type of storm event we may be having at the end of this week, but we've, we've tried to, um, do our best in, in forecasting what that cost would be.
So the fifty-four is what your best estimate is?
So our best estimate is that we'll have a turnback of fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, of the un- unexpended funds from two thousand seventeen operating budget. And then there's also a warrant article that. And then there's also a warrant article that we raised for the part-time police officer, and that warrant article, we- we never transferred the funds from that warrant article, it just sits there, it's part of the operating budget, but it's it's identified as a warrant article. So we still have the thirty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars remaining for that purpose, and-
Now, where did his salary come from, or her salary?
Well, the officer started, you know, we had a turnover, we had Officer O'Donovan leave, so everything, everything kinda got pushed back. So they were able to fund all the officer's salaries out of their operating budget. And then the special detail credit, which, you know, we just talked about from the Police Department Special Detail, uh, of fourteen thousand two thirty-seven, would bring us to an estimate of about a hundred and eight thousand dollars unexpended funds. And some of these numbers are a little, you know, it could end up being, it could end up being more than that, you know, but we'll see.
It does not include the potential snowstorm Saturday, right?
I've- I've made some- some guesstimates on the storm, so.
All right, any questions?
It really is, that's- that's, it's gonna come down to probably how- how police, fire, and highway ends up.
Any questions for Troy, or any comments on the budget review, or members? Okay. Budget encumbrances.
So just remember that we're- we're looking at a possible balance of unexpended funds of about a hundred and eight thousand. And to go into our encumbrances. So this year, I've, you know, from last year, I guess in the last couple of years, I'm learning more about encumbrances. I think we all need to keep in mind that when we encumber funds at this point in our budget, we're doing that with the condition that those funds are actually available. And we won't know that for about, like I said, another forty-five days, a month and a half. So I've put together a list here, working with department heads, and just some items that I'm aware of, that I'd like to recommend that we encumber. Um, and it's quite possible that, depending on how the budget ends up, we will not have enough funds to- to entertain these items. But I'd like to have them on record, if the board supports them, so if we do, these funds would be available. If we don't, if the budget doesn't turn out with enough money, then I come back and I talk to you about revising the encumbrances. So if you want, I'll go through the first ones, and so we're looking at, in the fire department, in their operating budget, they had budgeted thirty-five hundred dollars to do basically a software, sounded like a software update, to bridge the Hudson Communication System with the Litchfield Communication System, John for sure can explain it better than me.
And I think it's also included, it's also a software upgrade for Firehouse yesterday too, so it's the both the contract that deserves them that.
Yeah, so Hudson's IMC with our Firehouse, bridging those two.
Right, we- we- right. We wanna change that. Chief, so y'all did for saying that.
And so that was just one item, that was, again, it was a budgeted item, not able to be completed. The Recreation Commission has asked that we encumber five thousand dollars for the purpose of the River Access Project. This wouldn't cover all the costs, but it's, they have a capital, a field improvement line. They've not touched that money, and they'd like the board to encumber the five.
Question on that, I thought that was a conservation issue, coming out of Conservation Fund.
They don't have to use it.
It's at their discretion if they use those funds, and I believe that, I've heard that they, their support, they're in support of allowing this to be constructed on their property, I don't think they're willing, I don't think taking official action like I've heard, that they're not really that excited about supporting, you know, financially contributing to it.
So who will be maintaining it then?
Well, then that would have to be worked out, I've heard, I think the expectation would be that the rec department would maintain it.
So that become town, but, but wait a minute, but-
Yeah, it's confusing.
I mean, I'm in support, but I like a Conservation Commission. Now, what have they talked about, have you, at their meetings? I- I think it's important for them to contribute. And we have some type of knowledge as to what is the, um, gonna be the responsibilities. It's their land, but why are we paying to maintain it and to develop it?
We'd end up paying anyway, in the long run. I know, I know we can take funds out of their- their fund, but only if it surpasses a certain number to maintain, otherwise it comes out of the operating budget.
Can we, can we take a step back, though, I think that, I heard, and I might be wrong, but this could possibly be a warrant article issue as- as it- as it stands right now, am I correct? Well, Joan came to me earlier, like, two weeks ago, and said, oh, it looks like we're going to warrant on it. Might have to.
Well, it's getting, it's getting late.
Yeah, well, I know that, but now the definition-
Well, they better do a petition, or-
Well, anyway, so-
They have to go to warrant, though.
I don't know, that's what Joan told me.
If someone's considering submitting a petition.
They probably want the money. And if the Conservation isn't gonna give the money to do it, Recreation's probably gonna put one together to try to get the money to do it.
Recreation said, they said for like the last couple of years, they'll bring forward a warrant for something, they've never done it, so.
See, I'm on the other side of this, I'd actually up this amount, because I'd actually wanna see this get done.
Sure, but I- I- I don't want us shouldering all the, you know, the town shouldering everything when they have the funds available, and it's their land.
Exactly, I mean, I'm on Brent's side on this one.
I really would like their commitment, I think it's a great idea, and I'm all for it.
It was, it was-
And it was there, it came from, through them. I'd like to just get a clarification.
Estimated, I've heard, you know, seen numbers anywhere from eight to thirty thousand, eight thousand to thirty thousand, all depending on if they're able to get the National Reserve Unit to do the work or not.
Well, that's what I've-
So there's still a lot more money, this would be seed money.
You need about fifty to do it right, to put the fence up and all.
Yeah.
I- I'm all set, but I just think we need a clarification, I don't wanna dump it on our recommission. We don't have any full-time people to, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it'd end up being the-
I don't know, I mean, every facility has a maintenance issue. But as I understand, this would be no more than a gravel parking lot, a walking path, so your biggest maintenance issue is going to be probably some roadside mowing and trash.
Right, and then, is it gonna end up being public works, is it gonna end up being rec, is it gonna end up being Conservation?
You gotta mow around those boulders that they're laying down too.
Right, and- and I- I just, before we go anywhere, we gotta hammer that out.
No reason why we can't encumber the money, though.
And that's fine, but I had a question as to, you know, why we're doing, I wanna see them cough up some money also. Can you bring that to them at the meeting, you know, that we had this discussion, Kevin?
I would rather, I still wanna see this have more money in it. Cause just because, just because we encumber it for this reason, doesn't mean it has to be spent for that reason. Doesn't mean we don't have to allow it to be spent, is what I mean.
Correct. So I don't wanna pay anything yet until we find out what they're gonna kick in.
Let's go through the list, because some of these items, you might, you might not be, think that it's a high priority, and we could put them off. You could reduce some amounts. Assessing services, we have, we still have the Penechuk Abatement, that's an ongoing process, and that's coming up soon in two thousand eighteen. The consultant that we use, that does the commercial assessment of Penechuk System is extremely expensive. So we're gonna be using him, the contract that we had brought us to everything court-ready, but his time now, from, you know, pretty much January one forward, will all be billed on an hourly basis, so I'm anticipating that that could be a very large amount of cost. Um, and I'm also wanting to have some money available to, for Avatar, to continue to do its sort of quarterly updates that it does, that, in two thousand seventeen, I had to ask them to slow down a little bit, um, because we had the Penechuk issue going on. So I'm asking for thirty thousand dollars to be encumbered, for the combination of our regular assessment work and Penechuk Abatement Defense. MS four, stormwater permit, ten thousand dollars. Heard from the Budget Committee, they made an adjustment in their recommended budget, we had asked for twenty thousand, they reduced that to ten, and pretty much asked us if we'd consider trying to find the ten thousand dollars and encumber it out of this seventeen budget. So it's, this is gonna be, two thousand eighteen's gonna be the permit year, and-
So, so a relatively known expense, they cut in half.
Well, what they said, their argument was, we had ten thousand in the budget this year, we didn't spend it, so we should reserve for this, and that's why they cut the twenty thousand to ten, that was their rationale.
I think it's just a little, they're- they're becoming a little irritated, because we've been carrying twenty thousand dollars probably for the last three, four years and not spent a penny of it.
Yeah.
And that was their frustration, so.
It's no one's fault here.
Everyone's been waiting for a permit to come out.
But it- it, their request makes sense. The problem though is, well, why do we just hold the twenty thousand dollars, and it's like, well, every year we've been short in the budget bottom line, snowmobile and all that, we've used it, offset it, well, should rate, it's- it's- it's back and forth, it just doesn't make much sense.
No, and I understand.
But I think, you know, to be fair, their request was fair, we were gonna carry twenty, we had ten, we didn't spend. We did argue that, we did say that there's a potential we could overrun that budget, which we did, but we're still finding the money, so.
Okay.
So it kinda supports their argument.
Meeting room conference table. So, we, um, this, starting in the first of the year, the School Board and the Budget Committee are gonna be starting to meet in this room. And to do that, I think that we're gonna really need to create more of a horseshoe-type setup here for these meetings. So, not really knowing what the cost is, this is, I just put together a number of five thousand dollars. My hope is that that five thousand dollars would be enough to work with the state prisoners, because they have their woodworking shop, and I've seen some tables that they've done for other towns, comes out really good. If we're not able to do it, then, you know, you're gonna be looking at maybe going up to Manchester and going to the Used Surplus Office Company and seeing what they have, you know. So the range on this, if you end up having to go through an office supply company, probably around twenty-five hundred, maybe, yeah, around twenty-five hundred. And maybe state prison, which would be a substantial, really nice, you know, made of vineyard oak and stuff like this, maybe around five thousand, maybe it's less, but.
So why are they moving here?
Well, 'cause they asked us.
There's a variety of reasons, so.
The biggest reason is the audio and- and camera equipment is the cost to upgrade all that equipment to this quality that we've just spent here, they just really don't wanna duplicate the cost, the cable folks. So, that's really the primary reason.
And the people could see the meetings better from here.
How many people are at a school board meeting?
That meeting can get pretty full.
It's-
No, 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 the-
Oh, it's, well, it's not, it's, uh-
Budget, biggest thing is Budget Committee, I know, um-
What, nine people?
Ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
The school board's, what, six plus administration?
All their principals go, the superintendent goes.
Why can't they slide one of those tables up?
I think that, I think the request is fair, because this room needs to be set up as a better community room.
This table here is a waste.
It's, we need to, we need to figure out how to use this room better.
I think it'd be great to have a type of a U thing, thinner, it'd give us more room, every, the cameras would be able to see the people better. We could have technology installed right in it, I think it'd be a great idea.
You'd have a lot better-
Get rid of this thing.
Cord management, you know, it would, it would be basically a-
Rid of this thing?
Or put it somewhere else, this thing is a waste.
Find a place for it, but-
Look at all the space, it's a waste.
What?
We could do something half of its width.
Looks like there's six members to the school board.
I'm like, I'm baffled here.
Why's that?
Make do with what you got. Pull a friggin' table up and pull the chairs up to it, do what you gotta do.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Sit on the other side of it, it's too big.
Then you have, you're- The whole reason to move over.
We have to deal with you because of the way the cameras work, and you have to deal with- with an audience, and those other boards do attract an audience.
Right.
So-
So then they can't be in this room anyway.
Then you're gonna spend hundreds of thou- hundreds of thou- hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the system over at the school.
Yeah, I don't need to do it. If I wanna go to the meeting, I'll go to the meeting, as well.
We have, we have a request, who hasn't asked us for that? Why are they being so nice now? What's that? I said, I'm surprised they haven't asked us for that, to update the equipment.
A hundred and forty dollars.
It's the school board. Well, there's other, so, it's not the school board's not asking, it would be Cable Committee, but the challenge is, the Cable Committee's other challenge is that the media room is not, not good for the way the meeting is, they don't have access, we can't maintain the gear. These are school, these are town meetings, majority of town meetings are here, the only other offshoot would be the school board, but the Budget Committee's really the bigger, the biggest meeting we have.
In most other towns, when they have newer facilities, do a U-shaped type, a horseshoe-type setup for their meetings. It maximizes the exposure for the TV, it maximizes the exposure so that people can see and hear what's going on, and multiple people can use the same room, thus saving costs around for everybody.
Such a small room to try to do that in, though. That's, that's the whole thing.
You would shorten, I think you'd shorten the length up of this table, and you'd bring in that U shape.
Right.
Lodge would have to go.
And-
Well, no, you could just put-
These, these would go.
But then you're not gonna have any room for people to sit.
You would have plenty of room.
Sure you would.
If you wanna do this room right, you put the table on that wall, and you make it as long as you need it to be, and then all the seats face that way.
Or you do a half U, where it settles around that.
Troy sits at the end of the table, whichever end it ends up being.
Doesn't change the need for, at least invest in some furniture, whatever fits here better.
I mean, seriously, this thing is way overkill.
This is, I, I'll do it.
Way too, we don't need this, you can take that space and convert it into a U, technologically update everything.
Bring my saw in and cut it in half.
Right down the middle, actually.
Then you'll have two.
They get the two tables.
Then you'll have two, that's all we need.
Can you cut a straight line?
Oh, gee. All right, so, next one?
All you gotta do is set up a fence.
The next one?
MS four, meeting room conference table, ADA door closures would be for the front door entry system here, um, so that one of the doors would be, have that ADA paddle where you'd hit the-
Yeah, we are not ADA compliant.
What's that?
We are not ADA compliant right now.
Right, so Kevin had done, he got a quote from an installer and electrician, so I've given him a little bit of extra money here just for contingency, but the four thousand dollars is a pretty solid number.
His original price didn't include the electrical.
He had two quotes, he had three thousand something, and then four hundred for electric.
I just remember the first- Okay, I- I remember the first quote that he sent, that was like three thousand something, did not have the electrical in it built in.
Didn't have the electric.
So-
The four grand should cover both.
Do we, do we get new doors with this, or is it just like?
No, that wouldn't-
Which is timing-wise, all the, all the parts for mechanisms don't, aren't available anymore. We have to break them and borrow from another door.
He said, he said new doors, you'd be around sixteen to twenty.
He would be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause I was originally asking for new doors.
And he's not lying, I've in- I've installed doors like that before, and that's what we paid.
Yeah, with prices, you cannot open that door.
Unbelievable price on commercial doors. The next one is, okay, information technology, this is the amount, uh, this is the balance of the technology budget. So we're looking for, we're looking for a blanket encumbrance, so that we, we capture all those funds.
If you remember during the budget talk, what I said was, whatever I have left in the bottom line, we retain in- in encumbrance to cover the maintenance fee, issues we have mid- next year, so. Um, and it's actually more like fifty-two, I think, I just put all of my final bills in this week, so.
Okay. Scanners, is that radio scanners, or pl- plate?
No, this is, and this is, this is a, this is the remainder of a PO we already cut, this is what's left in that PO amount to finish up the, the printers that go into cruisers, plus the upgrades to the computers to do the license scanning for electronic ticketing and all that. We have three more cruisers to finish. And that's, the computer gets taken out, sent down to the dealer, they put some stuff in and they come back, so.
And you, and you did receive a six thousand dollar grant.
That's what I've said at the original.
You know, so this is part of um a grant initiative.
Yeah, the, the grant covered the printers and then we had to do the internal upgrades of the computers, so.
Okay, the next one is a welcome town, welcome um sign. I'm looking at the same one that we installed in the south end on the three A, and looking to uh see if we could purchase one for the north end. Um, and that would cost three thousand dollars. As long as we don't need breakaway posts, if we need breakaway posts and the design changes, um, probably another couple thousand dollars.
I would bet you would, because of the location, it would need to be placed to the road.
Yeah, that's, I had the space in the south end, we were able to get out of the right of way, I'm not sure in the north end if we're gonna be able to get out of the right of way. But we may have, I think, I think we should consider looking at a different location for the sign. I think where the current sign is, the north end is tight, there could be a couple of different other locations that could be better.
I also think the sign, a sign at the north end would be a little smaller. It's not as wide open.
But what happens if we put it? It's gonna, it's gonna look like you're putting it in the middle of somebody's front yard is what it's gonna look like.
Well, how about, I mean, just a suggestion, what would happen if we put it just south of Dark Hall Stables, in that open area over there?
Well, if you go any farther south, you're being Hudson for guts.
I mean, you don't wanna put it up in the trees, nobody's gonna see it, by, by Deb's house, but at least if you put it, you know, south of the stable.
Though Steve has a point though, if you do take that same design and make it smaller. I think that.
I was shocked how small it was originally.
I mean, that, that would, that would work.
Looks pretty big beside, beside Brett.
Look how big this pen is next to Brett.
That's not nice. Next, earned time buyout.
So fifty thousand dollars, this would be, um, would go towards um the purchase of earned time. We know we have um one employee that we are trying to, over a period of time, buy down our unfunded liability. Uh, and primarily that's what this would be for, but it could also be used for other employees that, um, you know, leave. Uh, without us really having much notice, um, but primarily it would be for.
But we also have that account, right?
We have that account and we're, you know, probably by the time we close the books. You know, I don't know what will happen, but we, we could have anywhere from thirty thousand to almost nothing in that account. We have a warrant article uh coming up in March where we're asking for fifty thousand to put in the fund. Last year we had, I think our cost was uh, wait a second, I have it under two thousand sixteen. Fifty-four thousand dollars for.
So where would you place this money?
This Karen would actually put this, uh, it would have its own account number and um, it would just.
So it would supplement the special reserve?
It would not go into that fund, it would have its own account number, and it would be only good for twelve months, if we didn't spend it.
And if it wasn't used, it'd go into unrestricted fund balance.
It would either, it would be coming back here next year if we didn't spend it, um, we would ask you to reencumber it, or it would just lapse.
Now, the reencumbrances, these are not new, these are only, this is money that's already been encumbered.
Right, so reencumbrance, we, the fire station design really technically isn't a reencumbrance, but that's a warrant article. Um, that's the, the warrant article that we raised money for the um design of the fire station. It was not a non-lapsing um warrant article, so we need to make sure we encumber those of the balance of the funds that was raised. This, we, remember, we raised sixty-six thousand dollars from taxation. Not from taxation, it was from the unassigned fund balance, I believe, so we have thirteen thousand nine thirty-five remaining. So that needs to be encumbered. Um, and then the other two items, yes, those were encumbered uh for two thousand seventeen. We've not expended those, these funds yet, uh, we wanna reencumber them. Um, that one number for I T, seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. I think that's gonna be, um, a lot of that money would be used for purchasing the town clerk software we just talked about, is that correct, John?
The, um, yeah, that, that part of it and then the, really the one below it, the twenty-five hundred would be the majority of it. And the seventy-two thirty, if that's exactly what's left, will finish up. The maintenance issues, plus some other, the, this is also the printers that didn't, not printers, these are the um. Computers that didn't get bought the year before, that got bought this year, that roll up to next year, so that's all that stuff.
But again, that's already been appropriated, John, right?
Yeah, and we, this was originally, this seven thousand was twice that last year, that's when we got a probably, we were able to get some deals and. Save some money, so this is what's remaining on that miss savings.
Gentlemen, your pleasure.
I'd like to move twenty grand out of the earned time buyout and put it to the river access. Leaving the th- thirty at the earned time buyout, squash that title, put a new title under it, fire department.
But expl- I, I don't know what you mean.
Well, okay, so the earned time buyout, this, the fifty grand there.
Yeah.
We already have a warrant, uh, we have a warrant article put out to do, to raise more money to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we already have money in the fund, we would establish more money to go into the fund if it passes. Which keeps it rolling, instead of creating an all-new account for it. Put twenty grand more into the river access, so it becomes twenty-five. Reason being, to do that project right, they need about fifty total, twenty-seven was the low number to get everything done bare minimum. If we don't get the, whatever it is.
Conservation money.
Army to commit. Then that way there, conservation, you can look at them and say, we got twenty-five, if you match it with twenty-five, the project's done right. That's my thought on that, and then get rid of the earned time buyout, the additional thirty that we're slating to put in there. And general earmark it to the fire department, because god knows, if that warrant pass- passes, that's a huge bill. Let's have every dime we can to put on it. Then why are we wasting, why are we banking money for the river access? Take it out of there and let's go all of it to the fire thing. Because the river access should happen, and I think it's a good faith effort to say that we'll put up half the money that they can. They're, they don't wanna put up the other half of the money, they, I, you know, this, those conversations have kinda sorta happened and.
We could do that, so here's my only concern. I'm okay with doing that, understanding that if something changes, we can change our priorities anyway.
Yeah.
But, if, if the, if the fifty thousand replenish does not pass, then we're, we're gonna be short in the earned time buyout, based on one op- one employee that we know about. Potentially have a, have a, under risk, as long as we can take it back up and we change our decision, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm fine with earmarking twenty-five like you suggest.
Well, this wouldn't be set in stone anyway, right? We'd have that flexibility to move where we wanna move it.
Um, well, yeah, you, you could, um.
I still think.
It was more, you know, here's the thing though, with the earned time, very concerned uh about this discussion. One, in January, we have an agreement, which I understand is not a binding agreement. But there is language in there that states that if the selectmen have funds available, uh, our best effort. Would be to um pay out a certain amount of earned time in year two, we've already completed year one. We've not done that yet, so what I'm telling you is that this year, just between the police department and um. And the town, you know, the non-union employees, we paid out about fifty-four, fifty-eight thousand dollars in earned time. In January, if you, if we have no funds encumbered, whatever's left in that fund, which I told you is going. Thirty thousand or less, um, you won't meet your, you know, your, your unofficial agreement with the chief for his second year. And I don't think you have enough money in, in your fund to be able to make payments uh in the, in December next year, in two thousand nineteen.
Well, that's what the warrant article's for.
That's only fifty. It's only fifty, and then if, so in January of two thousand eighteen, we tried to address the chief. That's gonna eliminate any funds that you have. In March, hopefully you'll get fifty thousand, but that probably won't cover your costs next December.
Remind me of this, the next time we talk about raises, how much it costs us every year on buyouts?
Change the wording and I think, I think that's gonna help, um, that's gonna help.
Troy, this is, this encum- this encumbrance is gonna be one account, bottom one hundred and twenty, this is what we're saying what's going, what we're putting it in there for. We can always readjust our priority based on.
I don't know that you can.
But we gotta narrow it down to a hundred and seven, cause all we have available is a hundred and seven, but we've got the wish list of a hundred and.
What I'm saying is, as I said, um.
That number's gonna change.
I don't know, I'm hoping that it's gonna, that number's gonna get larger.
One oh seven will get better, okay.
Um, but you never know.
So, in essence, we shouldn't be encumbering any more than we.
Well, that's what I said, I said, I, I said that your, your, this, my request of encumbrances is greater than my projected turnback. However, we would come back, uh, once we know how the budget actually ends up, come back and make adjustments if necessary.
Are we allowed to do that? Because we've always undershot it before to make sure that we were only encumbering money that we knew we were gonna have.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
You, you are, I mean, I was talking with the town manager today, they don't even do their encumbrances until the end of January. So it's, I think it's better to be on record before you close your books. You encumber those funds, um, if you find out that you're, you're not able to um fulfill that encumbrance. Um, you, the board just votes again to release that encumbrance.
So it's a motion should read if the funds are available.
Right.
Based on.
Based on fund availability.
Why don't you make the bottom line total encumbrance of nine million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine.
I'm trying.
I know in years pa- in years past, we've done it, because we've offset it, we've taken other stuffs out of the next year's budget. Which reduced it, and that's why we did it early.
We've done that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I would, mostly just not to exceed, right? It could be less, based on accounting.
Depending availability of funds, right? Is that your motion, sir?
Sure.
Second. Motion made and second is discussed.
Yeah, did we change any of the lines? Can't, we don't know what the numbers are gonna be.
I, I think the state's point is, uh, we're in agreement to put twenty-five to matching to the conservation, if, if in fact, things work out that way.
Basically, what we'll do is encumber the total and come back, and why don't we talk about the lines when we find out?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, these are the earmarks, I mean, I would, I would argue the, and I think.
If we could come back, it's just like a bottom line type thing.
I mean, this, this, these are the earmarks, this is our intent.
I remember like five years ago, we had to have, like, a contract in hand to encumber that money. So like those doors, we'd have to use that contract to encumber that money, that's the way we used to have to do it.
That's a, but that's cause you're taking it out of the following year's budget though.
No, that's because that's how you encumber.
We haven't, I, I don't think we've had any contracts for any money, we've had estimates in projects not to exceed. For the last.
I mean, for the last three years, the last three years I've been here, we've not had contracts. And, and we've been through, I've been through three budgets, so we, um, and we've been through the audits and the auditors have not had any questions or concerns about that.
I mean, if you, it, just using the one, the budget I run. Every time I could service, I have leftovers of projects that I'm trying to accomplish, but no contract, it's just, this is what I estimated. This is the remaining funds, and so I try to spend else, you know, carry over.
Well, to Steve's point, I, I, I know what you said, but I thought we, I, I was under Steve's impression that we had to have firm amounts in order to encumber. Money i- in the budget.
Do have a firm amount.
I, I, no, firm amount, expenditure amounts.
As long as, I mean, I know we've had it in some cases, but we haven't done it that way consistently.
And if the auditors have no problem with it, then.
I, I think that, you know, just to keep it um clear and simple, if. If there's some numbers that we could change around this evening to get to the twenty-five thousand for river access, I personally don't think that. Um, the little bit of money that we may be able to um earmark for the fire station really is gonna make a difference in the overall of that project. Um, compared to the items that we have on this list.
Let's just encumber what we got left.
The bottom line is that. I can't see why we just don't encumber an amount, the bottom line right now.
One oh seven.
And then, when we see what, when we have a clearer picture as to the amount, then go back and adjust these lines. We will operate on a bottom line budget anyway, throughout the year. So why don't we just uh, uh, encumber the bottom line? And not to, i- if the funds are available, and at the next meeting of the board, we'll have a clearer picture of. Where we, and we can adjust, we can fill in the blanks. I think it would be cleaner, a cleaner way to do it, and I think it would uh account for everyone's preferences. That we know we have a, we have, by then, we'll have a clearer picture of what we have, and then we can go and maneuver those.
So the motion that we already have out there is for, the to- not to exceed hundred twenty thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Assuming budget's available at the end of closure of our books.
Motion to encumber.
As, as, as outlined and subject to change.
Okay, who, who seconded? And you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero zero, reencumbrances.
So I make the motion, we reencumber twenty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars eighty-four cents. Um, as described for the. Yeah, three projects listed for two thousand seventeen.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bork, discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero zero, warrants?
Well, there's no more changes, right?
Oh, warrant?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Still talking about.
So we're gonna be out here in an hour.
Sorry.
We will be.
All right, the, the one thing, one we have not, um, I wanna make sure the board.
Eight minutes over.
The operating budget, I have, um, why does that have pending review? I just haven't updated it, cause, so the board of selectmen, you have not acted on the um operating budget yet. The budget committee has not either, they're, they'll be waiting for input from the public um hearing. But they've set the number. All the other articles, I have the selectmen as uh in support of.
I, I'm under the impression the board of selectmen does not have to recommend this, because this is a budget committee number. Could you clarify that?
I'll, I'll clarify it, but I, you, I do believe you have to.
Because we.
It's an appropriation.
No, I understand, but since it's the budget committee number.
You, you have, you have to.
The last time in Northwood, um, D R A or Laura told us that.
We always have.
Yeah, because you don't have to agree with the budget committee's number.
No, I understand, but it doesn't, you know, put you in a, a difficult situation.
So the wording of the operating budget article winds up with the budget committee's calculations, right?
That's correct.
And I thought they took, I thought they took action in the operating budget.
They did, they passed it.
Yeah, I thought, I know, I have pending here and I, um.
So they, that should be recommended.
Yeah, they're recommending it.
Right.
I know, I know the barn article, they're waiting for the June fourth meeting, to make a decision on whether they're supporting it or not, I guess.
Right, well, we don't have any numbers yet, they have to. Okay, is there a motion on article five, operating budget, to recommend?
I make a motion, we recommend upper article five, the operating budget.
Moved by Mr. Brunel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer, discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Abstain, motion carries five zero zero. Abstain, motion carries five zero zero. So now we probably shouldn't recommend the fire station bond until after we have everything.
I wouldn't do it yet.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna be participating in the.
You don't have a dollar amount, so you, you know, I could post, um. Not sure who, if you're gonna have a quorum at the June fourth meeting?
January fourth.
January fourth.
I did that last time, right, so January fourth, I, I would post a meeting for us, just in case.
I will not be able to be there, um.
January fourth?
January fourth.
January fourth. That's the budget committee, the special meeting that are having a presentation on the fire station.
Chief will be there though, right? I'm assuming plus the engineering group.
Yeah, we're meeting, so we are meeting this Friday at, at one o'clock at, um. At the contractor's office in Bedford. And if, I don't wanna have a quorum at the meeting, but if we have two selectmen that want to attend that meeting, more than welcome. And we're gonna be going over their estimates, um, the architect will be there to, um, talk about, you know, some of the other costs that are involved, not just construction costs. So s- we, the, the goal here is that Friday afternoon, we will have a number.
Okay, and we meet the eighth. Regular meeting, which is before the public hearing, so we could vote to recommend at that point.
Yeah, that's true.
So we wouldn't have to meet that night, cause our regular meeting's the eighth and the twenty-second. Okay, so we're all set?
Yeah, I'll post, uh, just in case, cause they're having a, they're having a public hearing. See, this is the trick, so late. The one thing that trying to schedule this public, we have to have a bond public hearing. And my goal has been to try to piggyback it with the, um, budget committee's public hearing on January eleventh. So with that being said, I think it's probably best that we have, uh, I'll have to consult with the, the budget committee chair. But I would think it'd be best for the flow of the meeting to have the school, um, have their budget reviewed and discussed. And then we go into the town and then we wrap up the night with the, the bond article.
I think of having it here?
No, it'd be at the auditorium. You think that's the best way to have it flow? I mean, it's, again, it's.
Well, probably.
The bond should be last, it's, you know, it could go for an hour, hour and a half, who knows?
Well, hopefully there, there's attendance, right?
Okay. Alright, so you know, the warrants are basically done except for the bond, right?
Yeah.
All set? Okay, administrator, oh, consent items, no items removed from consent. Uh, administrator report, do you have anything more?
I do not, no.
Selectmen reports, um. Only that I attended the planning board meeting, uh, oh, the next one's canceled, did you get that?
Yeah, I just seen that.
January, okay.
Something just came over, right?
Right.
Yeah, I just seen that, yeah.
Yep. Um, and, uh. I also, what else? Oh, that was it? Oh, and we did the sign and we also had that meeting on, uh, Route three A. Anyone else have a report?
Nope.
Nope. No items removed from consent? Any other business? Next regular meeting, January eighth. On behalf of the board of selectmen, may we wish all town employees. And residents a very happy new year, happy, safe, healthy and prosperous new year.